And good evening. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council Meeting for the month of November. We'll begin with our pledge. I'll ask Councilwoman Foster to lead us in that pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for this evening. We'll begin with reading of our closed session minutes from November 9th. On November 9th at 9:00 PM, a motion to hold a closed meeting was made by Mayor Pro Tem Vigliotti with a second from Councilwoman Foster. It was unanimously approved to go into closed session. In accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act, Title 10, Governmental Procedures, Subtitle 5 Meetings, Section 3, 305B, this meeting was closed in order to discuss/ consult with council to obtain legal advice. Topics discussed during this closed meeting were Maryland Department of the Environment Enforcement Action. Those present were myself, council, as well as City Manager Weprick, Attorney Gallow, and Clerk Calhoun. There was no action taken at the closed session. There was a motion to adjourn at 10:03 PM by Councilman Foster with a second from Councilman Hand and carried five to zero. Mr. Gallow is not here to approve, but I believe that satisfies the reading of the closed session. Up this evening, we have approval of the minutes of the October 5th combined meeting, October 5th closed session, and November 2nd open and closed sessions. And I'll entertain a motion from the council. Motion to approve. Do I have a second, please? Any discussion, changes? Questions? All are satisfied with the world? All right, with a motion from Councilman Haynes and the second from Councilman Fuller to approve the minutes of the October 5th combined meeting, October 5th closed session, and November 2nd open and closed sessions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Very good. I'll now ask members of the council if they have any conflicts of interest of anything on the agenda this evening.
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, I would like to welcome this evening Commissioner Steve Lance on his farewell tour. Would you like to say something to us as you're here this evening? I'm ready for you already. I don't like to waste important people's time.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members, and short time Mayor Pro Tem Vigliotti. Good to be here tonight. Haven't been here for a while. As we were discussing before you went on the air, Monday nights are tough for me, but I rearranged my schedule so I could be here tonight just to mainly come by and say thank you. It's been eight years since I've been your commissioner. I can remember back to 2014 when I first walked into these chambers and thought, what in the world is happening in Tawny Town? But I got to tell you, through all the craziness, all of you persevered, and I'm very proud of that. And through my eight years, including my colleagues, all of us have been incredibly proud of our eight municipalities because you are what makes our county roll. You can't go very far without going into one of our towns. And we have always certainly appreciated everything you all do. So you persevered through that, and, you know, again, I truly do appreciate that. I don't know that I ever aspired to get into this position. Most of you know that I grew up here. This is my hometown. My grandfather worked across the street at Bumgarner's Bakery. Actually, he started at the Steam Model Bakery. Mom and dad both graduated from Tawny Town High School. Anyone want to give a cheer for that? And I'm a proud graduate of Francis Scott Key High School.
Cheers.
And I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud of the fact that I was able to serve as a result of having that hometown feeling here. And you guys have always done a tremendous job. So from the county standpoint, let me just briefly go through the things that we've accomplished over the eight years. With your help, we've seen a lot of assistance with our highways. The highway user revenue, even though it was decreased, it has been increased now at the local municipality level, and I'm very happy for that. And we're seeing it at the county level as well. So we've been able to do a lot there. There will be no gravel roads in Carroll County at the end of 2023. While that doesn't sound like a huge deal, fiscally it is because we spend a lot of extra time and money on our gravels. And a lot of folks who live on our gravels know by now that they're the last ones served when we're either clearing snow or putting ice or treating ice or what have you. So everybody's going to be in the same boat when we get to that. So proud of that. During our tenure, we received in Carroll a triple AAA bond rating, and that trickles down to our municipalities as well. We achieved that before that little thing called the pandemic that we all went through. And I'll get to that in a moment, but I'm proud of that, too, that we've achieved that. We went from about 165,000 people to around 172 as a result of the last census. A lot of that has to do with the municipalities and the growth that we are seeing around our municipalities. We are just shy of 79,000 acres of ag-preserved land now. As most of you know, we have a goal of 100,000. It's going to be a little slower getting there now. But many of that property and a lot of those acres surround your designated growth area here in Tawny Town. So we've seen some great things as a result of that, and we're really proud of that. And that will continue, certainly it's in perpetuity. So we love that. Economic growth has been on an uptick. I know you all are proud of a VAPCO here, dresser pump, the list goes on. You've got some good industry here. VAPCO is growing every day, and I love it because I always tell these stories. You can be traveling anywhere in the world and look up at these air handling systems and see a VAPCO and go, okay, that's a piece of home.
That's right.
So, you know, that's really good, and a piece of home right here in Tawny Town. So pandemic, we all went through that. You know, whether you believe or disbelieve in how we handled it, we did it the best way we knew how. I was president of the board at the time, relied on common sense, and by gosh, we got through it. And I want to thank not only you all, but the citizens of Carroll because we wouldn't have gotten through it in the method that we did without your help and the citizens' help. So thank you very much. Look, when I got into this job, I was a different guy than what my predecessor was. I'm a people-before-politics person. There was no doubt it was politics before people then. I don't care what kind of letter you got beside your name. It's about the person. And I respect each and every one of you that have served. It takes a lot to serve in these positions, and I truly do appreciate that. And I think our working relationship has been very positive. Mayor McCarron before you, Mayor Vance, and anybody with the last name Vance has to do a good job.
Well, yeah.
So there's that. But again, yeah, it's my farewell tour. Got a lot of places to go this week. But I also want to end on a high note. Joe, I've known you for a little over eight years now. We started out a little rocky, but that's been mended, and I'm proud to see you stepping into my shoes to move this county forward for the next at least four years. And I want to say congratulations to you. And just keep up the good work that we've started, and just don't forget your towns. And I know you won't because you served here, and that's really important. So, Joe, I've got a Carroll County challenge coin for you that I want to present to you.
If I may approach Mr. Commissioner. That's a challenge to you, sir, to continue the good work that we have experienced here. And don't forget the people. That's the most important part of serving in these positions.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Again, I'm truly honored to have you step up in 20 days.
So again, Mayor, thank you. Jim, we've worked together on a good many projects. I know Tawny Town is in good hands. You've got some challenges ahead, but I know you'll get through them. You're seeing some great growth here as well. I know you're working on that bypass, which I hope comes to fruition because I truly think you do need that. And I've been working with State Highway to make sure that that is on the map so that we continue to do that. So Carroll County is in a good place, and it's a result of the municipalities. So we thank you for that. So again, thank you for allowing me to serve and for allowing me to stop by and watch what you all were doing and have good relationships with each and every one of you. So it's been an honor. So keep up the good work, and I appreciate the chance to come up here and yap a little bit about the good things. Questions, comments for me on the county?
Well, I'm just going to say it has been amazing to have you as a commissioner. You're always willing to listen and talk to me, whether it was just across the street or on the phone or back when I could stop by your office unannounced. But you've done an amazing job for the county and for this city, and we appreciate having an advocate like you. And I'm very pleased that we're going to continue having a tremendous advocate in that position in the way of Mayor Pro Tem Vigliotti, we'll say at this point. But thank you for everything you've done. You've done a tremendous job these eight years. I wish we could have you for longer, but now you get to retire and do nothing.
I had shoulder-length hair when I started this job. Just saying, Joe. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I want to say thank you as well. You know, again, I'm blessed to have become friends with you over the years. I'm blessed for the example that you've set, not least of which because I knew that if I had a question or a concern, I could text you, and as soon as you could, you would be back in touch with me. And for us at the municipal level, that matters. And I really cannot thank you enough for that, for your guidance, and again, overall, for your friendship. And so thank you very much for your service.
You know, here in Carroll County, we enjoy having a great relationship municipality to the county government. And you don't see that really anywhere else in this state. I mean, there's a lot of fighting between those governments. And here in Carroll, we don't get that, and I love it.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mayor. I've seen it in my role. As most of you know, I hit the ground running, and I was the rep for the county at Mako. I was appointed to the Governor's Emergency Management Advisory Council. I was on the Baltimore Metropolitan Council. I was on the Economic Alliance of Greater Baltimore. I serve on the Shock Trauma Board. So I've watched other counties and watched their relationships with their municipalities. There's nothing like Carroll.
Exactly.
We do it better than anybody.
Absolutely.
And you're spot on with that comment. So we need to remember to keep doing that because it's all about the people. It really is.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
Well, Steve, thank you so much for everything.
Thanks, Brad. I appreciate it.
All right, with that out of the way, thank goodness. We're going to move into introductions this evening. We have three ordinances to be introduced this evening, beginning with Ordinance 09-2022, Amendment to the Restricted General Business District. We went over this Wednesday evening. It was the recommendation of the Planning Commission that we add some residential abilities into that district. So I will open it up for a motion from the council, please, to introduce.
Motion to introduce.
Sorry, we're not accepting public comments at this meeting. Okay, we can speak after the meeting if you would like. Yeah, I did call and leave you a message. I never heard back from you. Okay. We'll speak after the meeting. Thank you. All right, we do have the motion from Mayor Pro Tem Vigliotti. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this amendment for introduction this evening? All right, hearing none. All in favor of introducing Ordinance 09-2022, the Amendment to the Restricted General Business District, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. All right, moving into for introduction, Ordinance 10-2022, Amendment to Yard Exceptions. We debated this Wednesday evening. This is for the corner lots that essentially have more or less two front yards and their ability to where they can put a fence as opposed to the restrictions at the time. I'll open it up for a motion, please.
Motion to introduce.
May I have a second to that? Any discussion on the motion? All right, on the motion to introduce Ordinance 10-2022, the Amendment to Yard Exceptions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. All right, and finally, for introduction, Ordinance 11-2022, Amendment to Downtown Business District. This is a new one for you. It was not on the agenda Wednesday evening. And this will be adding to downtown business district in addition to microbreweries and pub breweries, meteries, wineries, and distilleries licensed by the state. So may I have a motion?
To move to introduce.
May I have a second to that? Very good. Any discussion?
Very excited to see that we're doing this.
Good contribution.
Thank you.
I wonder if it's necessary personally to say licensed by the state of Maryland.
In the general provisions of our code, it states that when we use the term state, it's state of Maryland.
So we have it covered in there. Perfect. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Another overdue sort of a thing? All right, on the motion to introduce from Councilman Hand with the second from Councilman Fuller, Ordinance 11-2022, the Amendment to Downtown Business District, all in favor of introducing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Very good. All three of those ordinances will be up for you in December for approval. And of course, corresponding public comment will be available at the workshop in December as well. With that, we'll move into our single item for adoption this evening. This is Resolution 2022-14, the water allocation for the month of November. I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve. May I hear a second?
A second? Hopefully you want it.
Oh, no, I'm giving it to Councilman Hand as a punishment for Mayor Pro Tem Vigliotti leaving us. I'm a little vindictive this evening for you. All right, any discussion on the resolution?
The math checks out.
The math checks out? All right, with no further discussion, on the motion from Councilman Haynes and the second from Councilman Hand to approve the Resolution 2022-14 Water Allocation for November, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Very good. We're going to move into Mr. Weprick. Do you have a city manager report for us this evening?
Nothing to add since Wednesday.
Outstanding. Do we have any questions from the council on the city manager report or the departmental reports as they were presented to you? Okay, Mr. Gallow is not with us this evening, so we will not be accepting any further legal report. We're going to move into our new business this evening. We have, first off, our monthly financial report, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? Heated debate? No? All right, all in favor of approving the monthly financial report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. We're going to move into accounts payables. I will again entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
And may I have a second, please?
Second.
Very good. Discussion? Quandaries? Very good. All is well. Then all in favor of approving the accounts payables signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Very good. Next, we have the first of two bid awards this evening, first one being the Roberts Mill Road Broad Street Project. And let me locate the proper information here. Lost it. All right, the recommendation from staff is that it be awarded to WF De Lauder &amp; Sons in the amount of $3,484,217.34. So I will entertain a motion if council sees fit to award that bid. Is that moved? You all scared me there for a minute. May I have a second to that motion, please? Any discussion? Anything additional from staff on this one?
Nothing that wasn't included in the memo.
Perfect. All right, with nothing further, all in favor of awarding the bid for Roberts Mill Road Broad Street Project to WF De Lauder signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. All right, our next bid award is for our sewer rehab. The, this is broken down into two contracts. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, the recommendation from staff is to award contract number one for the replacement part of the project to WF De Lauder &amp; Son in the amount of $499,000. And along with that, contract number two being the cured-in-place lining being awarded to in Situform? In Situform Tech LLC. The bid amount being $249,575.81. So I would like to entertain both contracts as one award since they are the same bid.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second to that?
Second.
Any questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor of awarding the sewer rehab bid to the aforementioned contractors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next, we have from the sheriff's office, a memorandum of understanding for pawn precious metal and scrap metal dealers. This is an update, just clarifying an old term to a more broad term now. And I'll entertain a motion from the council to approve the MOU.
Motion to approve.
And may I have a second to that? All right, any discussion? Any input from staff on this topic?
Yes, sir.
All right, seems everyone is satisfied. All in favor of approving the MOU for the sheriff's office signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, and what you don't see on the agenda is I'm adding a number six, and that's going to be an opportunity for Mayor Pro Tem Vigliotti to address council and the gallery as well. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for the time on the agenda. As everybody knows, I'll be submitting my letter of resignation this evening, and it'll be effective at midnight. Mayor Lance was kind enough to give me a few minutes on the agenda so that I might say a few words. And everybody knows I'm famous for putting together a few words. Mayor Lance, Councilwoman Foster, Councilwoman Fuller, Councilman Hand, Haynes, Councilman Hand, City Manager Weprick, even though he's not with us, Attorney Gallow, Clerk Calhoun, Commissioner Lance, Dad, everyone. Thank you for the small time on the agenda. This will be my final meeting. I hereby announce my resignation from the City Council of the City of Tawny Town effective tonight at midnight. I think it proper in the spirit of Thanksgiving as I end my present service as Mayor Pro Tem and councilman that I'm able to reflect on some things, things for which I'm grateful and things for which I think ought to be noted. Above all, I thank God for his blessings and his guidance and the gift of life. I thank my mom, Val, my dad, Ray, my sister, Katie, my nephew, Hunter, and yes, my dogs Frankie and Maddie, for all of their love and their patience with me over the last nine years. I don't know where I'd be without any of them. They've been unendingly encouraging of what I've done, especially as family and public service make demands on each other, and I'll never forget that kindness. Several years ago, then-councilman Angelo Zambetti announced midterm that he was going to retire. Nine years, he said, was enough. I very much looked up to Angelo. I was sad to see him go. I didn't understand why. He was effective, receptive, and dedicated to the office. But now, after my own nine years, I understand. God calls you down different roads. But the work done here never ceases to be important. There are those who would dismiss everyone up here as only a mayor or only a council member for only a small town. I've heard these things before myself, but those who say those things are wrong. The people who live in these small towns matter just as much as the people who live in large cities and across the state. And being entrusted to an elected office which affects the daily lives of 8,000 people is not an easy or a casual responsibility and duty. Even if the population of our town was only eight, what you do would matter just as much otherwise. And the same is true of anyone who serves this town. Whether you're helping citizens from an office or patrolling the street at night or repairing the sewers, what you do matters. Please know how invaluable you are. Please know that you really do make a difference. Now, it might not be resplendent work, and you might not be on the news every night, but that's not why any of us do this. When the streetlights work and when you see the lights of police cars responding to a call and when you see the Christmas lights going up in December, you know the people you've elected are doing what they need to do. It isn't the applause we seek, but the purpose. You know this as well because most of the pressing issues we faced in 2013 are not all of the pressing issues we faced in 2022. We've dealt with serious new issues that have arisen in that time as well. We've cut water and sewer rates even when projections called for increases. We've aggressively paid off more than one-third of our debt years ahead of schedule. We've never raised taxes. We've dealt with and handled serious crises and emergencies. We've improved communication, increased operational transparency, strengthened our ethics code, implemented campaign finance, improved election security, fully funded our police, upgraded our water and sewer system, expanded our parks, offered more events and opportunities for public participation in those events, and have restored the city's role in Memorial Day and Independence Day. And this barely even begins to describe what we've done. There will always be new challenges, and there will always be new opportunities. And the test of character and competence is how we rise to meet them both. And I do believe that everyone up here has been equal to that unending task. In part, that's because we draw on the knowledge of institutional wisdom and experience, and it is in part because we seek reform where it is needed in order to preserve the best of who we are, to safeguard those things that really matter, our values, our community, and our home. And in serving our home, I think it fitting to mention the names of those who have served this city within my own time in office and to express gratitude to them for all that they have taught me. Carl Ebaugh, Angelo Zambetti, Rick Hess, Jackie Bové, Daryl Hale, Jim McCarron, Henry Hine, Nancy McCormick, Commissioner Stephen Vance. Their names deserve to be said and deserve to be remembered. Our success also depends upon the unique place from which each of us approach our common duties as elected officials. I also wish to express gratitude to those who serve now for what they have taught me, for their patience with me, and for their friendship. Bradley Vance, Diane Foster, Judy Fuller, Daniel Haynes, Lee Hand, Jim Weprick, Clara Calhoun, Major Bob Mitchell, and Jay Gallow. I also want to thank every single member of every department for not only what they do for our town, but for their guidance and friendship as well. I wish I had the time to mention every single person who works for the city, but you all know. Three times I've been entrusted with this office and have always done my best to justify the trust that was placed in me. In this, I also ask for God's forgiveness and for yours for any missteps, mistakes, or failures on my own part. We've done quite a lot over the years, and when I say this, I do mean it when I say we. As John Donne reminds us, no man is an island. When you were elected to a governing body, there is no- When you are elected to a governing body, there is no singular will that forces all ends achieved. But to be successful and achieve any end, you have to be willing to listen, to learn, to understand, and to work with others so that you can in turn lead. You may not always get it right, but you will always have the chance to make it right. And that is one of the most wonderful things about being an American. While I will no longer serve the City of Tawnytown directly in this capacity, I will serve Tawnytown and all of District One and our county as a commissioner. I believe firmly that these are not mutually exclusive places or positions. Rather, we are co-equal, Baromian, and concentric constituencies. We will still be working together. And though he is not present tonight, I want to say one final thank you, and that is to our city attorney, Jay Gallow. When I was first elected, Jay reached out before anyone else to get to know me, to become friends with me, and to become the brother that I always wished I had. I cannot thank him enough for his guidance and all those things that he has taught me this past decade. Late autumn is here. Crimson and yellow ocher leaves tumble along the sidewalks. Frost lingers in the pale blue morning shadows. The golden grace of sunlight still warms the land, and the lights of our city shine brightly. I hope, in my time, I've added some measure of brightness to them or managed to even light one or two myself. These are, after all, the lights that make home. I will carry all of those lights with me every step of my life. Thank you, all of you, for this honor. Thank you for everything. I'll see you around. May God bless you. May God always bless Tawnytown. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I first met Joe Vigliotti in 2013. We ran against each other, actually. My first attempt at being on council with kind of a last-minute decision to try for it. By that point, you were heads and shoulders above anything I could have imagined being. I was fortunate in 2015 to join you on the council. And during that time, I think we have established a friendship that I hope goes far beyond anything that we've done here. You've been a true friend to me. You always answer your phone. You always listen. We've always said here in the meetings, Joe and I, that we can disagree here in the chambers, but we walk out of these chambers, we shake hands, and we're friends again. And that's how, that's how we've learned to do this. There's professional and there's personal. And what happens at this table has always been professional and never personal. And I appreciate that from you. I appreciate everything you've done. You have been probably the most responsive councilperson the city has seen. It's the impact you have had on the residents, on the government, is beyond anything you can imagine. And I appreciate your willingness to move up to the county level. It's something I would never have an interest in doing. It's too much drama for me. But I couldn't think of a better person to do it. You deserve everything that comes to you. And I appreciate you're going to continue serving the residents of the city as a larger district one. So, Joe, thank you for being an amazing friend, and especially for being a councilmember in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you. I tried to fix the vote so he wouldn't get it, but he's still got it. With that, we're going to go into councilmember reports. I'm sure each councilperson's going to have something to say to Mr. Vigliotti as well. But we're going to start with Councilman Hand at the end there. Your report, sir.
All right. Well, majority of what we've been doing of late can be found in the introduction of the three ordinances that we discussed tonight. So a lot of discussion about those. And also, we've been looking at, we went through and edited chapters one and two of the comprehensive plan. And that speaks to our work. It's been a lot of wordsmithing and thinking about the implications of such. And then to you, sir, a sincere and heartfelt congratulations.
Thank you, counsel.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Hey. Let's see. Our skate park design for the rehab project has been finalized. Construction's going to start in the spring, as soon as it warms up a bit. Dog car construction is finished, except for a few natural features that they're hoping to get added this week. It's already been in use, and everyone apparently loves it. Public Works did a wonderful job on getting that done. We've received some proposals for the Memorial Park expansion project, and that should come to us at our December meeting. So that's moving too. Tales of Tawnytown was successful. We had 22 entries this year. As a judge, it was very, very difficult, because you want everybody to win. The animals were just adorable. We had a wonderful time. And then we had our photography contest that just ended. If you want a chance to see the winners, they're on the Parks and Rec Facebook page. Wonderful photographers here in town, too. They are just wonderful. Can't say enough. All right. My favorite thing, the Christmas tree lighting, is December 3rd. We're going to start at 3:00 PM with a candy cane hunt. This year, what we're going to do is add some coupons and gift certificates from some of the downtown businesses that are going to be on the candy cane. So as the people find them, they can also take them down and redeem them at the businesses. And then we're going to be working on having a, working alongside with economic development. We're having a holiday decorating contest for the businesses to generate a little bit more foot traffic. And we're going to have the community voting on their favorite decorations. And there'll be some prizes involved. And then, of course, we're going to hold our annual residential decorating contest as well, which every year I'm just amazed at how people just go all out. And of course, that makes me very happy. Joe? I'm not going to be able to say very much. So I'm just going to say, even though we're going to have to fill that chair, we'll never fill your shoes.
I'm skipping you. Councilwoman Foster, what do you have for us this evening?
Yes. At the MML Fall Conference, I made some contacts with folks who are involved with infrastructure grants. I got some names. I've since talked to a couple of people who keep referring me to other people, but I'm hanging in there trying to find grant funding for possibly a new Public Works building. To that end, I will be attending a a infrastructure grant seminar that the governor's office is hosting on Friday. So we'll see what comes of that. Maybe I'll get some more people to be referred to. Okay. Silver Oak Academy, while everyone is aware that presently they don't have any students, they are in a holding pattern to see if they can transition into another type of facility that houses students. In the interim, they do have staff that is continuing to help seniors in the community with outdoor chores, cleaning up yards, and that sort of thing. So they are still, they do still have a presence in the community, which is nice to know. Habitat for Humanity. It's been very exciting lately. The Tawnytown bill, because we had to go through USDA, and it took a while, but that groundbreaking should start early next year, weather permitting. On a happier note, we placed a young lady in a home in Westminster. This was an existing home, so it did not have to be built. And that was very exciting when she, after she was selected, we, the committee went to her house and did the publisher's clearinghouse kind of thing. So that was a lot of fun, and she was very excited. That's all I have. Joe? It's been a pleasure. And remember you said I could still call you.
Anytime.
And I'm going to hold you to that.
He's changing his number at midnight, I promise you.
But Joe always answers when I call or text, and I'm going to miss you.
I'm going to miss you, Tyhan.
Councilman Haynes?
All right. So just a couple highlights. Lois from Stone House is officially a nominee for the Greater Baltimore Areas Bridging the Gap Achievement Award. So I think that's an excellent regional spotlight for a community. Recently, I attended the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area Annual Meeting at Antrim, and I learned an interesting fun fact about an incredible preservation effort wherein the bricks from the old Swope Barn off Harney Road were both an exact dimensional and historical match for the restoration of the Whistler Home, or better known as the First Shot House in Gettysburg. So Tawnytown directly contributed to a significant historical preservation effort in Gettysburg. So I thought that was really interesting. And then just a plug, we've got Small Business Saturday coming up on November 26. Economic Development is working closely with the chamber and our local businesses to make the best of the giving season. So that's all for that. Joe, congratulations. You've been a confidant and a mentor to me. And I can't thank you enough for not only your service, but for your genuine friendship as well. Your resignation is bittersweet, but you set a standard for public service that anyone can only hope to meet. So I know you'll be an excellent commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stan.
That's all I've got.
And finally, Mayor Portem Vigliotti, do you have a report for us this evening?
I have the Police Departmental Report for the month of October 2022. In terms of training and education, all patrol officers engage in advanced policing, emotional intelligence, and cybersecurity awareness training. With the Field Training and Evaluation Department, or Department of the Report, new higher lateral officers, Echols and Betcher, have successfully completed the Field Training and Evaluation Program and have been released for solo duty status. With respect to specialized training, all patrol officers have been certified in the use of Linux Law Enforcement Information Exchange. And Senior Patrol Officer Sakadalis has engaged in American Red Cross Basic Life Support Instructor certification. In the month of October 2022, the total number of dispatcher-generated calls for service were 369. The total number of citations issued were 68. The total number of warnings issued were 131. The total number of adult arrests were 19. The total number of juvenile arrests were three. With regards to community outreach, the Tawnytown Police Department participated in the trick-or-treat event on Halloween by handing out glow sticks to all the trick-or-treaters. The department always enjoys participating in this event and all the interaction with the kids and parents. And they send a special note of thanks to all members of council who routinely participate with them. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have this evening. Thank you again, everybody, for the kind words, and I'll see you soon.
All right. My report this evening. Back on October 13th, City Manager Weprick and I took part in the MDOT tour. Were members of MDOT, including SHA, came to the county. And we took the opportunity to plead our case on what we would like to see happen here in our city regarding the state highways that converge within our corporate limits. That was followed up with by a call just, what, a week ago with SHA, where we discussed some further ideas. They continue to say what we can't do and what they won't do. But I really believe we're getting somewhere with these guys. I really do believe that. We threw out some different ideas that are going to have a good effect, and they're open to them, which is a very positive step. I have another call set up for them, I think, second week of December at this point. So we have some communications happening. They see what we're going for. They're numbers people, and when the numbers aren't there, they're not willing to play ball. So we keep pushing the ball back to them. October 16th, we held a unity ride here in town. Started at Memorial Park, went up to the circuit, went back down on bicycles. It was a celebration of all of the different people in the city and around the city. As you know, it's a very popular place for bicycle riders to come down. This was a focus on bicycle safety and a celebration of equality. I was very pleased to help lead it on my bicycle. I appreciate the Police Department taking part and kind of escorting it across the city and back down. It was a great day. We had 60, about 60 people there, I think. It was a good group of riders. It was a lot of fun and a beautiful morning for it. Trick or treat. Mayor Portem talked a little bit about that with the police involvement and their glow sticks and things. I just want to say, I didn't hear anything negative out of trick-or-treating. I didn't hear the normal harassments that people complain about or anything like that. It was a good night. I appreciate everyone, lack of a better word, being on your best behavior, making it about the kids, and they got to have fun and get some candy. I saw some really neat costumes. And I was out with Officer Leaks over in Meadowbrook by what everyone calls the Chainsaw House. And, you know, that is what it is. This past Friday, as you recall, was Veterans Day. We did have our monthly business breakfast with Clerk of the Circuit Court Heather Deweese, where she talked to those in attendance about the changes to business licenses and all of the services that her office provides to the community. And then myself, Mayor Portem Vigliotti, Councilman Fuller, City Manager Weprick, and Senator Justin Reedie were at the American Legion for their Veterans Day ceremony. And we take every chance we have to honor the veterans throughout the year as these occasions come up. But that was an amazing ceremony, to see the veterans there as they stand when their hymn was played. And just an amazing time to honor what they've done for our country. So thank you all for joining me there. It was a great day. And with that, I have nothing more to report this evening. I'm going to be seeking a motion to adjourn, but I'll let you all know, once we adjourn, we have refreshments in celebration of Joe Vigliotti moving beyond us and into bigger things. So don't run out the door. You can make your peppermint tea first, and then we'll have refreshments. But I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
May I have the second?
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Very good. All in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Thank you all for a pleasant meeting.